I call this City Commission Meeting, Special Meeting on Tuesday, December seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, to order at six oh five P. M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Everett McPherson Senior, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good gracious, City Eternal Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to come into your presence. Father, I should just lead us, guide us, Father, that you give us wisdom and understanding and knowledge that we be able to conduct the business of this city, Father, that this city will be your city. Father, would you just touch you, that you never mind, that you never hard tonight, that whatever whatsoever we do tonight, that it be pleasing in your sight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk, thank you, staff, thank you, Commissioners, and most importantly, thank our audience for being here today to participate in our special call meeting Tuesday, December seventeen, two thousand twenty-four, to order at six oh five P. M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Everett McPherson Senior, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Good gracious, City Eternal Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to come into your presence. Father, I should just lead us, guide us, Father, that you give us wisdom and understanding and knowledge that we be able to conduct the business of this city, Father, that this city will be your city. Father, would you just touch you, that you never mind, that you never hard tonight, that whatever whatsoever we do tonight, that it be pleasing in your sight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Bowden.
Present.
Commissioner Cowan Williams.
Present.
Commissioner McPherson.
Present.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk, thank you, staff, thank you, Commissioners, and most importantly, thank our audience for being here today to participate in our special call meeting Tuesday, December seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. Of course, this is a special call meeting, we have a topic, and we have seven items on this discussion. Actually, team, I'm sorry. And we'll be only discussing those items that's currently on the agenda. Intertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented, if there's no changes or additions, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, I recommend adjusting the schedule just briefly, requesting Resolution twenty twenty-four fifty become number seven in resolution, and began with Resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-eight. So it's just placing Resolution twenty twenty fifty at the end of the resolutions.
And everything else remains the same as part of it.
City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk is present.
Thank you, City Clerk, thank you, staff, thank you, Commissioners, and most importantly, thank our audience for being here today to participate in our special call meeting Tuesday, December seventeen, two thousand twenty-four. Of course, this is a special call meeting, we have a topic, and we have seven items on this discussion. Actually, team, I'm sorry. And we'll be only discussing those items that's currently on the agenda. Intertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented, if there's no changes or additions, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, I recommend adjusting the the schedule just briefly, requesting Resolution twenty twenty-four fifty become number seven in resolution, and began with Resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-eight. So it's just placing Resolution twenty twenty fifty at the end of the resolutions. And everything else remains the same as part of it.
Just for clarification, City Attorney, just want to make sure we're following proper protocol. We're requesting that an agenda item, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty be placed at the last item on our agenda.
Yes, sir, I believe it's appropriate, the only issue would be if you were adding something to the agenda that you don't have on right now. Thank you.
Thank you. City Commission, having heard that the City Manager is requesting that Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty be placed at the end of our agenda, as opposed to the beginning, and the City Attorney have verified that that's appropriate. Intertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I move that we remove, replace the order of the Resolution twenty twenty-four fifty
Second.
As spoken.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner McPherson and properly seconded by Commissioner Bowden for the adoption of the resolution with the arrangement of the agenda with one item. Call for questions. Here in honor, you ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we're moving to our agenda, which will consist of these resolutions, and the first resolution would be Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving the City of Pahokee's annual MLK Parade and authorizing application of a parade permit from the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney, City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir, Mayor Commission, this resolution would approve the city's annual Martha King Junior's Parade as scheduled for Saturday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It also complies with the FDOT application process in coordination with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Staff recommends approval of Resolution twenty twenty-four fifty-eight.
Thank you, City Managers, City Commission, having heard Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty, fifth, I'm saying fifty-eight, properly read into our minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager, what is your pleasure?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight.
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-eight. Call for questions. Here in honor, you ready for a vote, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bab.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you, Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Next we have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving the twenty twenty-five City Commission meeting schedule following consideration of options eight-one and option two as set forth in Exhibit A attached here too, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney and City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir, this resolution contemplates setting the commission's meeting schedule for calendar year two thousand twenty-five. The City Commission is required to meet at least once a month pursuant to Section two dash zero eight A of the City of Pahokee Charter, in which option one reflects. Historically and currently, the City Commission meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, in which option number two reflects. Staff recommends option one, as it allows for adequate preparation and timing for monthly meetings. You know, it will also come as a potential cost savings across several budget line items, including utilities, maintenance, and overall staffing. And one per, at one meeting per month would also allow for the scheduling of a more, more commission and community workshops. As of tonight, the City of Pahokee's agenda has averaged nine resolutions per meeting and a total of two ordinance with an average time of approximately seventy-five minutes. Based on these averages, a once-per-month meeting would yield an average of approximately eighteen resolutions and last appropriately a hundred and fifty minutes. Based on the City Clerk's staff report, there are only two known scheduling conflicts, Florida League of Cities for twenty twenty-five Legislative Action Days and Veterans Day, a federal holiday, which is on March twenty-fifth, twenty-five, and November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five respectively, and not included on the twenty twenty-five City Commission meeting, as provided tonight. Again, staff recommends the approval of proposed option number one.
Do we have a motion for this to discuss?
Mayor Bab, I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine.
A second.
Who's second?
I'll second.
And as a part of that, Mr. Mayor, you would need to, the person bringing the motion would need to put what option they're proposing, because this is an option-related resolution.
Should I, yes, Mayor Bab, I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, option number one.
A second again, a second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine with option one. Call for questions.
Yes, I have a question. City Manager, can you give us some numbers, and as regards, you say it'll save us on utility, maintenance, and overall staffing, please?
I don't have those detailed numbers, but just the fact that the building would be used once a month versus twice a month for meetings will show a reduction in utility costs overall maintaining the building and staffing associated with keeping the property clean. In addition to that, in a little bit more detail, the overall cost savings also come in times of, in terms of preparation for twice-a-month meetings as opposed to once-a-month meeting.
Any additional questions? I would make a question or comment. I'm, I'm not in favor of, at this time, going from one meeting to, from two meetings to one. I know the charter indicate that we're only required to have one meeting, and we do have that when we feel there's a need or a lack of business that need to be taken care of. But I think we're so far behind as a city itself that we need to put in all the time and all the hours we need to try to move it forward. I think at some point, when we are in a great operation, we can look at deducting our meeting to one meeting. And even at two, as a commission, if we feel that there's not a need for the second meeting on the fourth Tuesday, we could actually just decide not to have that meeting, that particular meeting. So I think we have the flexibility anyway, but we'll just have to announce it and say that due to a like of things need to be voted upon by the commission, that we feel we don't have a need for a second meeting. And we can do that continuously until we feel comfortable with just going to one meeting. I think what gonna happen, if we do go to one, we're gonna find some needs to have a lot of special call meeting. And the special call meeting is normally for emergency purposes, and a meeting that you really have to have when you call for them, so I think our flexibility already built in, I just don't wanna tie us to just one meeting. I think it's just too much, I just feel we just need to do too much right now at this point. That's just my opinion and my comment.
I have a question. City Manager, from an efficiency standpoint, how has two meetings a month posed as a challenge for you in terms of handling day-to-day, as well as preparing for a meeting at the same time?
It, it's, it's very difficult with limited staff to start. You're always preparing for a commission meeting. As soon as the first commission meeting of the month is over, you're in preparation stage for the fourth Tuesday. And that may not, it may not sound difficult, but again, with limited staff and the number of requests that we, that we've received since, since being here in terms of future agenda items, and we try to make certain that those are not pushed too far back. And with everything that's required during regular commission meeting, it becomes very, it becomes very difficult to provide the level of detail and succinctness that I really would like to provide. Will it get done? Of course. The challenge becomes tasking staff to stay late or come early, to do a lot of what is not doable during a regular workday, work hours. This, this special meeting is a prime example. We met last week, we did not have a second scheduled meeting for this month because of the holiday, but because there are several things that we needed to take care of in terms of the emergency basis, this special call meeting was, was our schedule. And with that, it, it takes a week, we just had a week to develop the agenda, get all the approvals, get all of the sign-offs, get, get it to Ms. Norris Weeks, who I will say was a champion this week, because there are things that got to her late because of the very, very short turnaround. The other part of it is that we not only depend on the City of Pahokee to develop and present a, an agenda, we oftentimes depend on external partners and external organizations to help develop and complete an agenda. Case in point, FDOT had, had an imprint on two of the items on tonight's agenda, in the cause of the short turnaround. It took some time, and I guess this is an opportune time to apologize for the agenda getting to you so late. But as I indicated in the past, I want to make sure that you have everything that you need in order to make a sound decision, an informed decision. So I was adamant about getting documentation from FDOT, whose staff was limited this week because of the holiday. And it takes multiple levels of sign-offs on those grant agreements. So that's just one example, and it, it doesn't happen all the time, but what does happen all the time is that we're, we're always preparing for commission meetings, which limit my ability and staff's ability to complete some of the other tasks that they have before them on a daily basis. The fact that we've gone through three, four audits now in the last seven months, staff has been tasked to respond to multiple, multiple requests from those entities and agencies. And again, that becomes very, very difficult to accomplish all of that and provide a product that I'm proud of to, to the commission.
Another question. And given that, have you found it difficult to basically have our agendas prepared five days in advance? So basically, that pretty much gives you a week
Yes.
to have an agenda to us
Correct.
you know, based on, you know?
Correct, which is almost impossible. I'll, I'll put it this way, since being here, I've, I've never been able to turn around a agenda packet within a five-day period, five-day advance of a meeting.
Which is what we've been asking for.
Yes.
I have another question. I, I would agree with even looking at reducing the time that we're, I send the staff and City Manager to have their agenda to us, and I know the reason behind that was to make sure that Commissioners had the information in front of them that they can review, ask questions prior to the meeting if needed, and to be able to make an informed decision, but also think that it has been causing some difficulties. And I would even be more in favor of reducing that time, say, from having it five days, maybe three days, or even two if necessary, you know, but again, I'm just opposed to the once-a-meet, meeting on once-a-month. I want to ask this question too, in your research, if you had done any research on it, we have four hundred and twelve municipalities in the state of Florida, and many of those municipality on the meet once a month.
I don't have that information there. I know in the three, in the tri-city area, one of the three meet once a month. That's the City of Belgrade, City of South Bay meets on first and third Tuesdays. We meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays. So out of the three local municipalities, one of the three, one out of the three.
And the second question too, have we looked at hiring staff? You mentioned the fact that, you know, you have a shortage of staff, and I agree with that too. I think we are short, I think we only have about thirty employees, that's full and part-time, if I'm not mistaken.
There's those three.
Those key areas where staff are involved in, you know, helping with their agenda and getting the information that's required for it, maybe we can look at, maybe kind of expedite and hire some additional staff so that wouldn't be one of the issues or concerns.
As budgeted to date, we only have one vacant position, and that position will be filled as of January fifteenth. When I say shorter staff, I mean for a city the size of Pahokee, the staff is very, very small. Even at full, even when all, all positions are filled, we have thirty-three now, if I'm not mistaken. And the majority of those thirty-three are in the Public Works Division and Department. Ideally, theoretically, it would be a perfect situation if you can hire a full staff, a full administrative staff. But as it stands now, and what I've seen historically, the budget does not support it based on overall revenues coming into the city.
I have a question, Mayor Bab, may I ask? So how many employees now do we have that work to assist with putting the items together for the agenda for the commission meetings?
All administrative staff, that's department heads mainly, Ms. Clark, the City Clerk, myself, and again, the legal department is mainly those that are centered around making sure that these packets are developed.
And so we don't have department heads for each department? I'm just trying to figure out, you're saying we're short staff, so I was just trying to figure out. You're not able to get the information from the department heads in a timely manner?
No, that's depending, sometimes that's the issue, but overall
Yeah, that is the problem.
That's one of the problems. But over, in a, in a perfect situation, the administrative staff is a very lean administrative staff.
What does that mean?
That means that it's not, we don't have a, a, a full administrative staff. We don't have, Mrs. Clark is a one-person department.
She doesn't have an aide.
Doesn't have an aide, Human Resources is a one-person department.
You don't have an executive assistant?
I don't have an administrative assistant. I mean, when you really think about it, it's, it's
But I thought we put in the budget for an assistant.
That, that person is, I've, I've not hired that person yet, I've not hired that person. And, and I misspoke a minute ago, that's the only other position that's not filled at this point.
So once we get that person, then that should make it, you know, once you get them hired, depending on when you decide to advertise the job and get them hired, then that should make it, I mean, that's gonna be their main job, correct? To help with preparing for the meetings?
No, they'll be in support of me administratively, with maybe twenty percent committed to actually developing the commissioner's agenda. There's, there's a tremendous amount of opportunity from grants to overall economic development, planning, everything associated with building and strengthening the city that we're not fully able to do now, again, without being repetitive. The staff is, is not large enough, in my opinion, to do a lot of the things that I would like to see done. Does that mean that we're not doing those? Yes, we are, but we can be doing a whole lot more and a whole lot better if we had sufficient staff. And I do understand the limitations, but this request will give, I think it'll give a little bit more time and attention to focusing on some of the other day-to-day things and some of the economic development opportunities, whether it's grant writing or doing more lobbying, which we'll talk about a little bit later, spending time out in office, developing relationships that will strengthen overall activity and business of the city. That's what I would like to see in an ideal situation.
I would say this, we had budgeted, I think, two years ago, or as late as maybe a year. Fifty staff, a total of fifty staff. City Manager analyzed the staff that he felt that we needed, and it was budgeted for. And then we even verified that with the Finance Director, who indicated that not only was it budgeted for, but we would be able to maintain that level of staff. And for some reason, for some reason, I really don't know why, he didn't follow it through and hire any of those folks. So we still had the same small staff, but I, I understand your point, and I'm not, you know, just hearing what you're saying, I, I agree with many of what you're saying, but it's just my preference on the one versus the two meetings, but, and again, I, I, I want us to look, even if this don't pass and it may, because we don't need three commissioners to support it, I still hope that we're able to look at hiring some additional staff to be able to do some things that we need to have done in this city, because I think we do have a very small staff that not having the manpower to do what we need to have done. And again, I will also look at the requirement that we placed on the City Manager as far as getting their agenda. I know it's important to have it in hand, but I think even if we had twenty-four hours, if we had that amount of time to really look over the agenda, it would still give us enough time to at least make a decent and informed decision. If not, we can always postpone a certain item if we don't have enough information to vote on it in next meeting if it don't have a cause of problem.
I would say twenty-four hours a little difficult for some of us who
Yeah, it works.
have obligations.
Yeah.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, that's something that we've probably even voted on the five days prior to, it gives us adequate time to, of course, do the things that we need to do in our personal lives and look into the agenda in preparation for meetings. I think this is why the City Manager is asking for this, to allow them to be a bit more efficient. Um, as opposed to always preparing for commission meetings and trying to follow the rules in getting us our agenda five days ahead of, uh, before the commission meeting. So, um, the fact that he has a short staff, I think, uh, from an efficiency standpoint, um, this is a legitimate ask.
Will that one day, uh, help as far as getting, I know, I think you stated getting the outside. I know we get a lot of backup.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, from different, uh, contractors. So would that help getting all of those documents in time? So we have all the factors that we're, that we're, that we request to have.
Let me say yes, with coordination of staff and follow-through and follow-up with staff, that will give us ample time to get everything that we need in a timely, in a timely manner to you. The other thing that I want to mention, Mayor, is that, um, you have an option if there was a need to have an additional meeting in a month. So we can always add a second meeting if there was a need to. I think you kind of explained your preference in reverse. But it, it, it works the same way. If you want to, under the two, if we want to cancel a meeting, we can do that. But also under the one, if you wanted to add a meeting, you can do that as well.
Are there in additional questions? Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Cowan Williams?
No.
Commissioner McPherson?
No.
Mayor Bab?
No. Motion failed.
And Ms. Mayor, if you can take up the, um, eight, put a, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. If you can have option two so that you have a vote on option two and then you'll have your record as a resolution. Yes, sir.
Should I do that now, Mayor Bab? Well, I move to accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine, option two.
Second.
Just for the record, could we again state what option two would be so that all of your standing commissions were able to vote in?
Option two being currently what we're doing now, as our commission meets on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month.
Correct.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner McPherson that we entertain resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-nine to have option two as our preference. Call for question.
I don't have a question, Mayor Bab. Can I make a statement? I just want to say that I want to support option two because I feel like the city, we are so far behind and we have so much of work that need to be done. And so if we go to one meeting, just me personal, I just don't think that that would be, um, effective for the, for the city. And I hear what.
Yeah, we voted down.
I know, I'm just saying why I'm supporting two.
And I guess I'll make my statement as well. When you have individuals that are working for the city and they're telling you what they need in order to be efficient. Um, and I, I think, um, you know, we're not making, we're not making it easy uh, for people who work hard, hard for us, uh, on a day-to-day basis, um, especially with them telling you what they need from you. But, um, whatever the commission wishes, we'll go with that.
In addition to comments or questions? Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Cowan Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Irvin?
No.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed by a three-two vote for George. Next, we move to resolution twenty twenty-four dash six, city attorney.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida, accepting the external auditor's report on the audit of the city of Pahokee's financial statements and single audit for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three as set forth in composite exhibit A attached hereto, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
I have the floor.
Not yet, not quite yet.
Okay.
Yes, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four sixty is approved, accepts and allow for the proper and required filing of the city of Pahokee's external auditors' report in single audit for the year ending September twenty twenty-three as performed by the city auditors, HCT Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, LLC, uh, of which Mr. Harvey is here and representing. Mr. Harvey and his team is prepared to present the findings in a presentation format that has been prepared for the commission and the community. Upon the conclusion of his presentation, staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-four sixty. Mr. Harvey?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh, wishing everyone a hu- happy holidays to you. My name is Roderick Harvey. I'm with HCT. HCT is a CPA firm of record for the city of Pahokee. We will be discussing the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three audit and those results. I am also happy to announce that this puts us one step closer to united us, one step closer to getting on track with our reporting. But we'll save that for later. So before you, we are issuing our audit report with an audit date of December ninth, again, for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Based on our audit, our testing, our inquiry, our third-party confirmations, we are issuing, uh, certain funds as unmodified or a clean-out of opinion. And then there are several funds, business-type funds, marina, cap, ground and cemetery funds that we're issuing a qualified opinion on, which is consistent with our reporting for the last several years. Over the next few minutes, we will talk about the audit results. We'll go over the supplementary slides that's required. And we'll talk about the tripod of responsibilities. That tripod includes management, HCT as your external auditors, and of course, the elected, uh, body, which is those charged with governance. We performed our audit for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three in accordance with GAS generally accepted auditing standards and also performed a uniform guidance audit, which is an audit for federal dollars that come through. We planned our audit. There were no changes to our audit plan throughout the audit. And as you can see, we've issued all of the necessary audit reports. There are no matters outstanding and any significant accounting policies are noted in note one of the financial statements. Significant accounting estimates, allowance for doubtful accounts, depreciation and the fair value of investments. Significant risk or areas we viewed as areas to be aware of, management override of controls and revenue recognitions. And for the year September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, there were no new accounting pronouncements that the city should have or must have adopted. Reporting to you again, there are no uncorrected misstatements. Anything that were noted that required adjustments, those adjustments were made. And there are no outstanding matters as relates to the financial presentation and disclosure omissions. Deficiencies, uh, there were some noted. I am happy to note to you, as you should also be happy, that the control deficiencies noted relate to prior year. There are no new controlled deficiencies to report to you, no findings from external parties or related parties as relates to transactions with the city. As a part of our required communication by the AICPA, we as your external auditors must, should report to you as the governing body, certain things. So we've put together this deck. And as you can see quickly, there are no matters to report. I will highlight for you, uh, no illegal acts, non-compliance with laws, no other issues were found, no disagreement with management and no significant difficulties encountered during the audit. But again, as you can see from this page, there are no matters to report as required from, by us to you. And we are deemed independent based on AICPA standards. We will now spend the next couple of minutes going over the financial portion, portion of this presentation. We'll look at revenues, expenses, capital assets and talk a little bit about long-term debt. Again, we performed our audit in accordance with GAS to make sure that the city was performing its accounting functions in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. We inspected the records and discussed with the people how things are done. Related to revenues, revenues for the year September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, eight million. And we compare that to last year, which is the twenty-two year, seven point one. We selected a sample of transactions, significant transactions and tested those revenue streams, uh, to ensure accuracy, compliance, accuracy, I'm sorry, existence, accuracy and presentation of those recorded revenues. Moving over to expenses for the twenty-three year, six point nine as compared to five point six for the twenty-two year. Again, our testing for expenses or expenditures, we looked at significant expenses and tested those for completeness, accuracy and the presentation of those expenses in the financial statements. Capital assets remained relatively flat, fifteen point one for the twenty-three year as compared to thirteen point nine, uh, almost fourteen million for twenty-two. Long-term debt again was flat, uh, four hundred and nine thousand in the twenty-three year as compared to four hundred and fourteen thousand for twenty-two. The next several minutes, we will begin to talk about the responsibilities. Our responsibility is to audit and report. We also consider the control environment. Although we don't issue a report on the control environment, we do note to you any findings or issues that we note in the control environment. Those findings will be reported to you in two ways. Those deficiencies will be in two ways. A significant deficiency, which is a deficiency in the control environment, less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to be brought to the attention of those charged with governance, i.e. the elected body. Or a material weakness, which is a deficiency or set of deficiencies in financial reporting such that a reasonable possibility exists that a material misstatement in the financial statements will not be prevented or detected or corrected on a, in a timely basis. And of course, as stated earlier, we have no current year findings. So the next few minutes, we will look at prior year findings. I will say upfront, management has and finance has continued to do the best they can with, to make some changes and to note that these findings go back several years. The first finding relates to the city performing a physical count of inventory. We noted that finding as partially implemented. Again, this finding goes to twenty fourteen. It relates to testing of credit card activity. And this has three separate bullet points. Some payments were not made timely, resulting in late fees, sales tax being paid on some purchases and the accounting records not identifying the public purpose for transaction. We noted based on our testing and discussions, this finding as partially implemented. The city has made changes to their processes and will continue to review policies and procedures for credit card use and will implement appropriate procedures to provide adequate control and accounting records for these activities. Now again, to be clear, this is a finding from fourteen, but we have to, we must report on it each year. And so we will ask management, finance, what are they doing currently to make this finding, um, complete or implemented? Moving to the next finding, which is twenty fifteen, the city has not established adequate controls over revenues and unearned revenue for two funds, the marina and the cap ground fund. We deem this finding as partially implemented, controls over the marina and cap ground revenues have improved with updated policies and procedures. Next finding, against the sixteen year, the city has not adequately trained staff to implement purchasing procedures and management has not adequately, uh, monitored those purchasing pro- purchasing process, forgive me. We deem this as partially implemented. The Marina Campground Fund Enterprise Fund, as you all know, the Marina and the Campground is an enterprise fund, a business-type fund, has experienced operating losses for many years and the cemetery enterprise fund has experienced operating losses. This finding is not implemented as both funds are still operating at a, as a, at a loss. The next slide goes into further detail regarding the responsibilities. Again, our responsibility is to audit and report, which is what we do. Management is over the design and implementation of the control environment, the procedures, how things are done. And ultimately, the elected body, the commission, has oversight over the financial reporting process and oversight of the environment to make sure that controls are in place, designed, that those controls are designed to prevent, detect any fraud that may happen. We have reported to you the results of our audit for the twenty-three year, again, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. We are very excited about moving forward with the twenty-four audit. The manager didn't know I was going to say this. Uh, because we are looking forward to getting the city, or assisting with getting the city on track with meeting the June thirtieth deadline at twenty-five. And so it's very important and I do want to give a kudo to finance and management, who are working with us and, uh, coordinating so that we could get through this audit. And thank you all for allowing us to come to this special meeting so that we can get this done, so that we can be in good shape to move forward and get us on track and take that, uh, square hat off of our heads as relates to reporting to, uh, the state by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to serve the city and if you desire, I will do my very, very best if time allows to answer any questions that you, Vice Mayor, Commission, management may have of me as a member of HCT.
Question, you mentioned the, um, credit card. It was two thousand and fourteen. Those findings, although those, all of those findings were from two thousand and fourteen, or did we have policies in place to ensure that, um, these things don't occur anymore?
Great question, Commissioner McPherson. That finding, not all of those I read, that particular finding relates to two thousand and fourteen. What the standards say, the AICPA standard is, once a finding is noted by whatever an auditor, because we did not, we were not auditors in two thousand and fourteen, we must look at the current status of that finding. I know from conversations, from following up with my audit team, that some progress has been made in that area of credit cards. But it is not to a place to be fully implemented. We are hopeful with the management and finance that the twenty-four year, which will be reported in twenty-five, we can clear some, some of these findings as implemented. Once it's implemented, then it falls off. It's no longer reported.
Okay.
I have a question. So do you know if we have a policy in place for the credit cards now? I know you said that we had a finding and you all look at it. So do the city have a, a policy in place that's been voted on for the credit card usage?
I'm gonna give my answer. I asked the manager to back me up if I state this wrong. Yes, there's a policy in place. Those policies have been updated. The matter also re- relates around, the policy is there, is the policy being, uh, being followed? And is every part of it done in a fashion so that we can say, yes, credit card transactions as noted incurred, performed and adjudicated in the records is correct and accurate. And that part, those steps are what we deem to need more assistance to make sure that every credit card transaction from whatever source, whatever person in the city is done in a, done and completed in a professional fashion that we as auditors can feel comfortable about.
Now, I haven't seen the policy, but I just want to ask a question. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the policy or not. Is there to help with this, anything in there that says what are consequences when this is not followed? Or do you think it may help if everyone that has a credit card, if there's a training done on what the policy says to ensure that we don't find ourselves with this as a finding in the future?
I, I believe I can say with pretty good accuracy that there is no, uh, consequences for not following. It should be. I agree with you that there should be training done. And I think, I think as an auditor, there should be consequences or removal if those, uh, procedures and things are not done in a fashion that is appropriate. But I'm saying that as the auditor.
Right.
Right? The manager and finance may have practice that's different from what I say. I come in and audit, I look at what's happening versus what should happen and I report.
I just want to respond to that, uh, without being repetitive. I think it's already been mentioned that this finding stemmed from a twenty fourteen audit. There's been consistent over this last seven months, uh, refining and training, implementing. refining and training implemented in places to make sure that we have this removed from one of the measured items. There is a policy, the policy is sound enough. The training will, the continued training will allow city staff that uses credit cards to be in a better position to understand their responsibilities to the overall policy. But I'd be remiss if I didn't repeat again, this finding was highlighted in twenty-fourteen. There's been considerable progress made to have this removed. And I'm, I can almost speak with some level of assurance that come June twenty twenty-five, this item will not, no longer be one of those areas of non-compliance.
You mentioned the inventory. Is this a past finding, and could you elaborate a little bit more on that when we're talking about our inventory?
Yes, sir, Commissioner McPherson. That finding, and I'm hastening to it now to make sure I have it right in my mind's eye. Yes, that, that finding goes further back to twenty-ten, and I not laugh because it's funny. I laugh just because the time that has passed. So that finding, it's a twenty-ten finding that was noted. What should happen in any organization, whether it's municipal corporation, a nonprofit corporation, or a for-profit corporation, there should be some true-up or account of inventories, what you have, right? It should happen at least on an annual basis. So that if we think we have ten rolls of toilet paper, and again, I'm being facetious, somebody goes and counts and says, hey, we actually have nine. One of them walked out the door, whatever. So that's what we would like to see happen, that's what should happen as it relates to the city. And once that happens, then this finding can be cleared as it relates to. Now, I will say this in advance of any other comments. This is a man-hour requirement, right? You gotta have the people, the bodies to, to physically go out and count. It is not a computer test, right? And so I might imagine that it has to be scheduled, manpower has to be adjudicated in a fashion to get it done, and then those reports and records have to be trued up in accounting. To again, as I said, if there's ten rolls in the ledger, but it's only nine physical rolls, then we have to make that change in their county records. So it is time-intensive, but it should, must be done.
Another question. Is our, is our inventory automated in a type of way, or is that, I'm just asking, because I don't...
Yeah, some of it, some are, as the cemetery, for instance, is one that's flagged almost every year based on what I've been able to see historically. There is software that's being audited for the cemetery inventory that's gonna help it substantially. But you have a historical concern there where there have been several different cemetery supervisors and their record-keeping has not been what it should have been. But we're, we have a, a goal to correct that. It's gonna take some time, even with the, with the software. As Mr. Harvey indicated, it's, it's something that you have to physically do to a certain degree. But the goal is to, to eventually have something in place that will satisfy that as well.
And you mentioned the Marina and cemetery as being in a deficit. I know these are previous findings, but what would be your suggestion on how we can, and what? Maybe go in a little bit of detail as to what's causing that deficit? Maybe so I can understand a little bit better, so we can know what kind of corrective action plan we might need to try to put in place to improve that, to fix that.
Lack of revenue. Just don't have revenue to generate in a, in a manner to actually substantiate those different departments.
Can, can I, I, I want to repeat what I think I heard you saying. I'm, I'm a layer on top of what the, the manager's saying. I believe I heard you say Marina and the Campground Funds, what, basically what's going on with them? Correct? Let me lay a little foundation. So, and not that you don't know, but just for the good of the order. So those are business-type funds, right? So we should, what the policy says, the theory is that we should be able to charge enough to, to users to cover costs plus profit. That's the baseline of them, because they are not governmental funds, where we tax. They are for, they are for-profit of business types. So the mere fact that those funds have not historically performed in a fashion that we can cover costs is an issue. Why are you questioning the deficit? To the manager's point, revenue and/or costs, transactions need to happen in a fashion so that it, it does not produce a deficit. How that's done is at the feet of the elected body and management. It's how do you get it to a place where it is not in a deficit position? That is the work. But we, as auditors, audit and report, this fund is continuing to show up as deficit. That, based on the type of fund it is, is a problem.
So basically, we need to get in a place where we're generating revenue, get our...
Revenue significant, significant enough to cover costs. Yes, sir. And sorry to cut you off, but yes, sir.
I know I've asked about the cemetery, and I know, City Manager, you said you would get back with us when he reported this the last time, because it was on the last audit as well. On, I know you said you was gonna check into it to see when I said, bring it, so we could see what, what is it that we can do with the cemetery. And I know you also said you were gonna look into that fund that we have, that we can't do anything with, just to get some background knowledge and background history, because we, you know, hear that it's not generating fund and the type of fund that it is, we can't use the funding for anything. So I guess I would still, maybe that's something in the future we could still talk about, what we can do in regards to the cemetery with some ideas and brainstorm to see some of the ideas we have, if they are possible, because what we may be coming up with may not even be possible, if we can do it with the cemetery.
Yes, yes, you, I, I will. We're in the process of developing a presentation that would be workshop to cover cemetery options and possibilities moving forward, as well as the Campground and Marina. But it may, it may serve the commission a little bit better. And from our understanding standpoint, if you could speak a little bit about the, the cemetery and the limitations of using those trust fund dollars.
Okay. Great question. So I'll go back to how I started earlier. We have categories of funds, right? I mentioned general funds, governmental funds, I'm sorry. General fund is one. Governmental funds, we have business-type funds. And so based on how it is characterized, there are certain things you can and cannot do with that revenue or those dollars, right? Some of it is by law, some of it is by statute, but you just can't do it. And so if you make money in a business-type fund, there are prohibitions against how you can move it into government, right? There's exotic things some governments do, and, and I won't get into it here. But we just have to be very mindful that if we make money in an enterprise fund or business-type fund, same word, then those dollars, that revenue, has to be held and used in a certain type way. We cannot use it on the general side, right? So tho, those are the things that, again, will cause an audit finding, and those are the things that we must make sure we do not do as we look at how funding comes in and, and happens.
But you, would someone be able to provide us a workshop on it when we get ready to talk about it? How funds can be used, that's, you know, if we start generating funds for the cemetery, how they cannot be used, and that kind of can...
I would defer to the manager.
Get a better understanding?
Yes, sir. That's, that's no issue at all. But I still, just, yes, sir, we can do that.
You answering her question or my question?
You're the sir, she's the man.
I just had one last question, the final question. You said in two thousand sixteen, it was relating to purchasing? Purchasing? So when you did your findings this year, you didn't find anything in regards to that? So purchasing, you think is looking better? And for us, the policy that we have on purchasing, being followed, being implemented, or...
So, great question. I'm gonna cut the baby in half. When we look at exceptions or findings, we already have a stack of prior year findings that we are required to assess or provide a current status, okay? We also, during the course of our audit, we look for any current year findings. Current year findings, in my mind, as the audit partner, should be separate and apart and above from any prior year finding. Because if I have to report an update on a prior year finding, if it's in the same area, I'll just add to my update. I don't need to make a new finding on it, right? So that's to the basis of your question, did we find anything else in purchasing that would rise to a new finding? That's no, right? But what we did do is say with this finding, it is not still in an area clear enough, clean enough, to say it's fully implemented. So that means, what I'm conveying to this body is there's still work to be done. Has some work been done? Yes. But it's still in a fashion, in a place, that additional work can be done to get it to a level that is clear. So we didn't see anything that rose to a level for something new, but what I am signaling by saying it's partially implemented, is it's still a gap between what should be done, thumbs up, and what is being done?
So we need to strengthen the policy?
Policies, implementation of it, how things are done. It's more than just policy, right? Policy is what you should be doing. What are you doing? And the gap is what the auditor's about. I'm gonna report to you that gap. How big is that gap? That's the difference. Policy, what you should do, what are you doing? How big is that delta? How big is that gap?
Let me, let me remind, remind the commission again. This audit report and presentation is reflective of fiscal year ending twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
So you have to, you can't measure the current situation of, of city, city's audits and finances. You're only looking at, and he's reporting on, things that happened during fiscal year twenty twenty-three. So any, nothing that has happened this fiscal year or prior to the end of September, of September, the end of September twenty twenty-three is, is projected or presented in this finding.
One friendly amendment, twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, correct.
Nothing in the twenty-four-year are we reporting on now, so that's a good comment.
I know, I was just asking that this happened in two thousand sixteen, so I was asking if you were seeing it in twenty twenty-three, is what I was asking. So I'm not talking, I understand it happened in two thousand sixteen, but you just audited two thousand twenty-three. So I was just asking if you were still seeing some of that in your twenty twenty-three audit.
Yes. We, we are, are not at a place to clear this one yet. Yes, ma'am, in twenty-three.
Right, that's what I was asking, thank you.
And just for information purposes, the reason I'm asking some of those questions, I want, whatever deficit, or whatever findings that we had in the past, I want us to be able to put a corrective action plan in place, and whether that be something through the policies, through the commission, or something that the city manager can, can handle. But the thing is, to be aware of it so we can address it, and just not let it just continue to linger and roll over into the next year, and the next year, and the next year.
I concur, I agree. Yes, sir.
With regard to our deficits, and even kind of getting behind, could you speak to, there's a word that, that's been used a lot as it pertains to our predisposition or disposition, and that's stability. Could you speak to that in terms of the negative impact that that type of thing has on, ultimately on our ability to actually generate revenue in, in the light?
When you say, got your question.
Management stability? Because I think we have a tendency to look, okay, we'll, we'll focus on the policy. We'll focus on other aspects, but I think we kind of gotta take a look at ourselves. And you can, you know, you can, you can choose whatever you want to choose, but oftentimes, you can't choose the consequences. So given historically what we've dealt with, especially over the past five years or more, the word that has been used a lot is you need, you need to be, have a bit more stability.
That's a slippery slope for me as an auditor. So I will address, since we as auditors deal with historical. Yes, we have all, I have, I put it on me, noted that there have been changes at the city. I think it's a personal opinion if those changes are good or bad. We've seen managers, people come and go. At the end of the day, it is this body's, this city's residents, thoughts, protocol, to make whatever work. What we are here to do in retrospect, because we're always looking at historical, is to look at what is or was and report it to whatever the current sitting body is. Yes, as a partner, I can say that stability in the government starts at the elected body level and moves through management, in this case, the city attorney, city manager, and the city auditor. Those are the three positions that the electives make, and then, of course, staff. So the more stable an organization is, quite frankly, the more stable a community is, the better the city is. But I'm speaking to that as a person and not as a partner, because that is outside of the scope of what I can reply to as a professional CPA for HCT. Mayor, you got any other questions for me?
No, not at this time, do any other commission have any?
To all of you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing HCT to serve you. We look forward to working with you for many, many years to come. Happy holidays. Don't eat too much beef, poor, drink too much. Make sure you come back wearing the same weight that you weigh now. Y'all look good. Thank you.
And again, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to resolution. We're gonna approve.
Yes.
The undertaking motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty.
Yes, sir.
That we accept the audit report and we accept resolution twenty twenty dash fifty-six?
Second.
Fifty-seven. I mean sixty, I'm sorry. I've got it written right here in front of me, sixty.
It has been moved by Commissioner Calvin Williams and proper second by Commissioner Everett McPherson, senior. Call for questions. Hearing and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
May your bow.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Five to the State-Funded Grant Supplemental Agreement with the State of Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, for G one seven five three dash FM number forty-four zig-two zero three zero dash one dash five four dash zero one, Barfield Highway Reconstruction Project, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution authorized a time extension to the Barfield Highway Reconstruction, Reconstruction Project from its current completion date of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, to a new completion date of June twenty twenty-five. Staff currently developing a project completion calendar that's anticipated to fit well within these time parameters. Previously discussed, there are some components of the projects that will require additional inspection services prior to going to the previously scheduled final lift of asphalt and project closeout. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-one.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one properly read into the minutes by City Attorney, properly explained by City Manager, what are your preference?
May I move that we would accept resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-one?
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and proper second by Commissioner Bolden for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-one. Call for questions. Hearing and honor, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Bow.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-two, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, approving the state-funded grant supplemental agreement number nine between the City of Pahokee, Florida, and the Florida Department of Transportation. Attached here too is... Attached here too is exhibit A, authorizing the mayor or the city manager to execute the same, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney. City manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This resolution authorizes a time extension for the phase four resurfacing project, uh, from December thirty-first twenty twenty-four to March thirty-first twenty twenty-five. As reported during last week's commission meeting, a pre-bid meeting was held on May eighth twenty twenty-four, and the opening bid meeting will be held on Friday, January, uh, I think it's third, twenty twenty-five. We should allow ample time for project closeout and completion by the required extension period. Project scope again includes resurfacing of West Third Street from Carissa Drive to South Lake Avenue, West Fifth Terrace to Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, West Fifth Street. Staff recommends approval of resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-two.
Thank you, city manager. City commissioners having heard resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-two properly read into the minutes by city attorney, properly explained by city manager, what is your preference?
Mayor, I move that we would accept resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-two.
One second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and proper second by Commissioner Bolden that we move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-two. Call for questions. Hearing and honor, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, madam clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Mayor Babb?
Yes, thank you, madam clerk, thank you commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three, city attorney.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute amendment number two to grant agreement L two one zero four between the city of Pahokee and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Attached here too is exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, city attorney, city manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir, resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-three authorizes a time extension to the Martin Luther King Junior Park Improvement Project, uh, with the, from the date of December thirty-first twenty twenty-four to the new date of October thirty-first twenty twenty-five. Last week's status update during commission meeting, uh, outlined that RFP deliverables are scheduled for January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, this FDEP amendment number two is to extend the terms of the grant agreement for certain non-new construction development, renovation, and repairs of recreational facilities at the Martin Luther King Junior Memorial Park. Staff recommends approval of twenty twenty-four sixty-three.
Thank you, city manager. City commissioners having heard resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three properly read into the minutes by city attorney, properly explained by city manager, what is your preference?
I have a question. On the, um, did I?
Let's get the, uh.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Motion is second. I move to accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Commissioner Calvin Williams for the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-three. Call for questions, uh, Commissioner McPherson.
Yes, that extension, that just, so that gives us more time to get the, uh, project done, that extends it to, what was the date, October twenty-five?
October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, yes, sir.
Do we have to be spending money before that date, or do we have to have everything in place?
You have to, you have to complete the project, which includes spending the fin- funding.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
Given that it's, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, and, you know, because I've, I've been speaking with, uh, you know, individuals from other municipalities, and one of the things they've been explaining to me is how they've been able to complete their park projects in phases. Uh, I would like to know, like, the best possible way to spend this money as soon as possible, even if it's for a specific, you know, initial phase, is that possible?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the reality because based on the funding, the two hundred and fifty thousand from, uh, uh, FDEP, uh, to, in, in addition to the twenty thousand dollar match, it gives a total of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And, uh, as scoped originally, the funds allocated for this project will not complete the project in totality. So it would be a phased approach to, uh, completion of this project.
So what can we do sooner than later in terms of spending this and moving forward?
I think a big part of it is gonna be infrastructure. And we will have, I'll be able to give you in detail, uh, probably as early as, uh, after the Christmas break, the breakdown on exactly what will be utilized for each section. Because as it was originally scoped, it, it had different, uh, components and, and dollar values assigned to it. What's gonna hap- what's gonna need to happen is now we have to get with the engineers and see exactly what could be done with the dollars that we have available at this time.
Thank you.
I have just one question. Um, did you say, did we have to go through a design phase for this project, did you say?
No, not necessarily the, a design phase, the pro- the, I'll just give you a little bit more detail.
And the only reason I was asking is because I know, you know, I, I've heard our economic development person says the design phase can sometimes take up to a year, and I know we've only axed up until October, so that's why I was asking to see if it had to go through a design phase and will we actually be done by that time, so that's why I was asking.
No, it's, it's not a design phase, it's for new construction and development, renovation and repairs of resident, recreational facilities. Just as explained originally, uh, there is no design, uh, there's no separate design and construction phase in this particular grant.
Okay.
You may be referring to McClure, uh, project, which is a design of, uh, in, in reconstruction of a roadway, which requires a design phase. Uh, and a separate construction agreement will be, uh, determined once that design is complete from McClure, but we're.
We can get it done on Mr. Bolden's short. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, cuz I guess it was similar to Mr. Bolden questioning what we can get done within that short time, in that time, right?
Uses for these funds that we have to adhere to.
Yes, yes.
Just one, one last question, just a suggestion. When we do implement, knowing that that two hundred and fifty won't be able to do everything, can we get, and, um, I don't wanna say design phase, but whatever we're gonna do, could we have a comprehensive plan? So if we do apply for additional grants, this can, it can be undone in phases, phase one, and we can utilize this for this particular portion of it, knowing that it's not gonna do everything. And then if we can, looking down the road to get additional funds, that we can have a phase two so we can have something in place when we start soliciting for grants or.
Yes, sir.
Legislative priorities or whatever.
Yes.
In part of that too, I think our legislative priority includes some additional funds for MLK to.
That's why, uh, I'm saying.
Are there any additional questions?
Yes.
From the commission? Hearing and honor, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, madam clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Babb?
Yes, thank you, madam clerk, thank you commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. I wanna make sure I didn't get the order. Your request for the order of the agenda was to move item number one, which was the first resolution to the end of our agenda, was it to the end of our agenda or the end of the resolution?
End of the resolution, just before the discussion items.
Okay, great. Next, we are entertain resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty, city attorney.
A resolution of the city commission of the city of Pahokee, Florida, approving a contract with Michael E. Jackson to become the city manager of the city of Pahokee, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date. And, um, you will find attached exhibit A.
Continue with this procedure we've been doing. I just briefly have you explain resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty.
Okay. Yes, mayor, this resolution deals with, um, approving a contract with me as the city manager of the city of Pahokee. Um, I know this has been workshop, uh, I think twice, and, um, it still does not have a, a contract. I've served as interim now for seven months and five days. Um, and I was, this matter came up at the last commission meeting and was requested to be placed back on the agenda. I will say, um, at the end, I think it was approved or recommended at one commission meeting, and I asked that the matter be pulled, and in asking for the matter to be pulled, and the rationale behind that was that I really didn't feel that a, uh, a full negotiation took place, uh, during the workshop and, and, um, negotiation part of the contract. I originally asked the commission to consider a salary of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The commission, uh, decided at some point that they would remain at the one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred, twenty thousand dollars. The salary amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually, as posted and agreed upon, was for the interim city manager position. Uh, I have proposed a hundred and forty thousand based on the city's ability to honor that request through its budget, current budget. And I would like to have an opportunity to negotiate, uh, based on what was originally set and what I requested. To my, um, belief that negotiation didn't take place, it was just a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the way that I really understand negotiations is that both parties, uh, come to the table with an amount, and something in between is negotiated on and is settled. That didn't occur. I am, uh, I'll just say that, and then the other part of it is, it was suggested by a commissioner that this item be placed back on the agenda. So that's why it's before you tonight.
City attorney. We originally had a contract initially that was presented to our city manager, interim city manager, and he received the contract and put in his negotiated amount and some other items that he wanted to have included in his contract. That was presented to us, and we went over it and discussed it. And any item that was admissible by at least the majority of the commission, which would be at minimum of three, would be acceptable, and those was what we approved and went forward with. He say he didn't have an opportunity to negotiate. So I thought maybe I'm just misinterpreting, I thought that was part of negotiation, and even the salary, I would give him the opportunity, and still give the opportunity to say, okay, you all say this, this is what, I originally said a hundred and forty, but this is my next offer to accept this position. I mean, we could do that now, or when it came to the final conclusion, it was three commissioners that decided that they would have the hundred and twenty thousand as our offer, our final offer, whatever you wanna call it, and that we would also, at the end of his anniversary, each anniversary, look at the possibility of increasing his, uh, we have that option. We, we would increase if we decided how much, I'm not sure, but we'll negotiate that too. So I'm just trying to get some guidelines and some option of what we can or should do at this point. I think that now it still stands at a hundred and twenty. It may be another commissioner who have decided to make another comment to say they want to increase that amount. But as we last left it at our last meeting, that's the Sarah who came up with. And I'm not saying it's not in the changes, so commissioners can tie, uh, turn in or whatever, but that would be the, the resolution that forces their amount unless we decide now we would like to reconsider whoever made the original motion a second, I don't know. Just trying to figure out how the best to move it forward with a mutual agreement.
I'll say, uh, this is probably the third meeting that we've talked about it. Um, I think when we got to the section of compensation, I don't think, uh, that we actually finished actually going through that contract. Negotiation, yes, we talked among one another, uh, about it, but nobody spoke with Mr. Jackson in terms of negotiating. Uh, we basically say we're gonna stick to this number and that's gonna be that, that's not negotiating. Negotiation is when both parties mutually walk away fairly satisfied with the agreement. And I think it's apparent that Mr. Jackson is not satisfied with that amount, so this may be an opportunity for us to do that.
May I respond? I have a question, well, I have a question first before we start that. On number, section six, under other benefits, um, it, they were supposed to strike out the part that says the city, uh, shall provide the city manager with an allowance of two hundred dollars per month. That part was supposed to be, um, struck out, and it was supposed to be that the city manager, um,
sign phone.
Um, be a part of the city's mobile use plan for monthly cellular services.
What section are you on?
Section six, under other benefits.
He was giving it two options, one was to have a stipend for its, uh, allowance, and one other one was to use the city, uh, fund.
And we agreed that.
We're gonna remove the first option of, uh, the stipend.
Okay, um, this, as you know, was, um, updated by Ms. Abney, I can certainly take that out.
Okay.
But I think the, um, and I'll strike it right now, but I think the bigger issue is this. So what, um, where you are right now is, and the manager is correct, if he, if he doesn't believe that there's been a meeting of the minds, because that's what, that's what contracts are, it's a meeting of the minds. So, um, from my understanding, the manager did get an opportunity to respond during the meeting to things that you all said, but you still don't have a meeting, a, a meeting of the minds, right? So, um, you could, and I'm not sure whether the only issue that is remaining is the compensation issue, and everything else is okay?
Yes.
Or, okay, so this meeting does give you all an opportunity, um, as was stated, um, to talk about compensation, talk about what you all would want to do, whether you want to, um, you know, do something else. Ultimately, um, it is the city commission that does the budget, and, you know, what you budget for is what you have, and the manager can make a decision or not. Or, um, it is the manager's option to, um, you know, not participate or participate, uh, without a contract. If he participates without a contract, there may be other things that you want clarified through this contract because there, you don't necessarily have to have a contract unless your charter says, I'll check and make sure. But, um, but in any event, let's just assume it doesn't say that you have to have a contract for the manager. Then those things that you don't have a contract for that are important to the city within this document, those are things that you have to provide for some resolution or some. those are things that you have to provide for some resolution or something as to, you know, all employees will not do this, or will do not that, you know, not that. Now, I'm not trying to tell you that that is the best option. I don't, I think we've put a lot of time in going through this, and, you know, you certainly don't want to have animosity with your manager, right? So, but I'm just telling you, these are, you know, some of the kind of tricky things in terms of where you are. If the commission is on the side of, you know, we are going to go forward with a, you know, he doesn't agree, we're going to go forward with the city manager process. That is an option for the city. If the manager decided that he's going to go forward without, you know, he will just continue to work until you, you know, say he can't, then that's, I guess that's something that could happen too. But, but let me check really quickly in terms of the legal aspect, just to make sure that a contract is not required by your charter. And if that's the case, you know, you all have, you know, a bunch of different options. Not all of them are as desirable as others, but this is your time now to talk about it, and it is properly on an agenda for discussion and further negotiation, if any, that both parties can have.
Mayor Bab, I have a question that I think is important, that I think we left out, that should be in the contract as well if we move forward. There's, we didn't have anything in there, which in the former commission, I mean, the former city manager's contract, like if the manager gets sick and they're out for a period of time, and they still have the job, we didn't put anything in there in regards to disability or becoming sick and unable to perform the job or anything. I was just wondering, if something like that happens, where does that leave us? Because we can't, you just can't fire a person, like if they get sick or something and can no longer perform their job duties or anything. So, nothing like that was in the contract. So, I was just wondering if something like that can be added to the contract.
I know in some of the previous contract, we even included-
It was disability, health and-
Did y'all have one of them right here that we had in there, yeah? But we didn't have anything in here.
City attorney, the initial contract that you drafted, did it have anything dealing with any illness or sickness or when unable to perform due to health issues?
I will look, and I'll be able to tell you. I'm not absolutely certain from the top of mind right now, but I can look pretty quickly.
I think the city's personnel policy and insurance plans cover a lot of that. I'm not sure if you want it to be inserted in a contract, but it speaks to all of those categories of illness or situations, so.
It says something if you can't work for so many, for a period of time, that's covered in the policy.
It's all covered in the city insurance.
Oh, I would like to, yeah, because I would like to see it. I didn't, because I don't have the policy, so that's why I'm asking to be a part of the contract.
Yeah, it's not an unusual thing, because your, if your, your charter speaks just to, like, dismissals and a hearing and all of that kind of thing. That's if, you know, if it were to be something for cause or without cause. But it doesn't, I don't believe, I'm looking through it right now, speak to that issue. Let me see. Sorry, I did not look, I did not look at it before. I didn't think we were getting into this conversation. But, I can tell you exactly disability, if there is something mentioned. Thank you. And so, section, so the powers and duties of the city manager are in section three point zero four. The city manager, when necessary, this is regarding his powers to- The city manager shall designate a qualified city employee to exercise the powers and perform the duties of city manager during any temporary absence or disability of the city manager. So, that's the city manager doing it. A city may revoke such designation at any time and appoint another eligible person other than a current sitting commissioner to serve as acting city manager. So, here, the city manager would appoint, but let's just say something horrible happened with the city manager where he did not, he wasn't able to appoint someone, and for a temporary period. That is not addressed. This deals with temporary absences and what the city manager might do. That, I would think that something like that, you know, we could craft something and add it if the manager agreed, something that would deal with, you know, more permanent situations. If something were, you know, to tragically happen, and I don't think that would, you know, cause a lot of disagreement. So, we could, that's something that the commission wanted to do that. I'm sure Mr. Jackson has already expressed that he wouldn't have a problem with that.
So, Mayor Bab, okay. So, we have his ask, which is one forty. We have the base, which is one twenty. How do we find some common ground with regard to compensation in this regard?
It would be up to the majority. I say common ground when we say that. For instance, we do have an offer that we have presented initially, the one twenty. He's asking one forty. It could go several options in several ways. You get to the point where if the majority is adamant about the one twenty, and I'm not saying they are at this point, you could say, this is the offer. You can either accept it or reject it. There have been city managers who have asked for a certain amount, and the company, which is a city, say, this is what we're offering. You have that option to take it or not, and we move forward to whatever we need to do to search for a new city manager. Or, you can say, the ask is one forty, we're offering one twenty. If you really want to negotiate, you may say, let's, let's split it. Maybe somebody will recommend one thirty, and if three agree with that, that's what would be one thirty. So, it can be a different way that we can do this. Right now, it's on the table as one twenty. Whether someone, again, may have changed their mind and decided, I want to change my thought pattern on it. I don't want to lose the city manager. We haven't even got to the point where it may be this, it happened this way. He may decide, you know, if y'all can give him one twenty, I don't want to self position at one twenty. But we don't know if he's saying that or not. He may be, his action may dictate, and that's what he's thinking about, contemplating doing.
I think we can clear that up right now, Mr. Jackson.
I have a comment. Maybe we might need to just slow up and point. I don't know if y'all agree with this, but maybe we can just keep him on his interim. At the end of the year, do evaluation, and, which, right now, he's moving the city in a positive direction, because there's nothing in the bylaws or in the charter that states that we have to move on hiring him permanent or how long he can stay interim. But I make a suggestion that we keep him as interim for one year. But he already has seven months in now.
But I think we need to take into consideration, we need to take into consideration what he thinks about that. I understand our position. But if that's not something he's pleased with, then it's on us to try to, if we say he's doing such a great job for us, and we're really proud of the things that he's done for us in, over the past seven months. We, part of negotiation is us both, both walking away with something reasonable, not it being a one-sided situation. That's not a negotiation.
Well, the reason I said that, we can properly evaluate, or get a more adequate evaluation after a year, if we did that, and then I would be, I mean, things are moving. I wouldn't have any problem with-
The typical probationary period is ninety days. He's been doing it for seven months.
All parties will have to agree to that.
Yeah, if, if I may. Professionally, I'm not comfortable with being in an interim position for a year. Most interim positions, ninety days. I think one of the interview questions was, what's your plan for the first ninety days? And I, when I answered that question, I was of the opinion that the interim period would last for ninety days. Again, I'm seven months in, and I'm not allowed to participate in any of the benefits that's offered to the city and the city employees as it relates to insurance and other things that require being a full vested employee with the city. So, I can't accept the, even the notion of extending an interim period for an additional five months.
And just, I just want to tell you what interim says from your charter, because that is actually mentioned, right? So, an interim city manager, during the period after the date that the city manager's position is vacated for any reason, like it had been vacated by Mr. Lucas, and prior to the date that the city commission has appointed a new city manager, by vote of the city commission to fill vacancy, the position, the city commission shall appoint an interim city manager. Okay, so that's where you all are. The interim city manager shall be appointed by majority vote of the city commission. No resolution is required, so which means that no contract is required. Severance pay for the interim city manager shall be based on the following. So, there is a severance pay provision that goes up to, he's beyond the one hundred and eighty day period, and now he is, which he would get a month if he left. And then, if it's greater than a year without a permanent contract as interim, then he get, you get three months under the severance, under severance. In order to be eligible for severance pay described in section C of this, so this deals with severance, but you all are not really there yet, but I just want you to know that there is language in the, because, in the charter dealing with interim, because it's, you know, interim has come up a few times, so.
But, is my understanding, and I may be incorrect, that we can authorize the interim at some point to even have insurance? Hospitalizations or whatever, life insurance? Are we able to extend that? I'm not saying he would even accept that, but are we able to extend that to him during this period of time?
I think that's probably something you want to check with the league on, but my understanding is his position right now, he's an employee of the city, and from being an employee, he should be able to benefit in that way. But, you know, if you all wanted to make it official, and I would check with the insurance first, if that's Mr. Jackson's concern, and then make sure that, you know, that wouldn't, that, that he would be covered. And if that's the case, you could do it as a resolution that, to make clear that he would be extended the insurance benefits as all other employees of the city. But I, but I don't think that's his issue. His issue right now is really trying to, you know, deal with the issue that you have, and we want to make sure that we stick, because this is a special meeting. So, you want to be, you know, clear to the spirit of the resolution of what's being put before you, which is really whether you're going to approve a contract and coming to some terms that you all might agree to, so.
I'm, I'm trying to just put my idea out there, you know. I think we've been around this horse now, where I think seven months. If I'm not mistaken, I think we extended it in some way, if you're correct. Did we extend the interim city manager, I think, twice already? I think the first time was what, thirty days or sixty days? And then we went ninety days? Did we do that? I think we did that twice already. And here we talking now about the, the, the city manager trying to find him to get, as an interim, to get the benefits. So, we trying to find him to get the benefits of a regular employee, just make him the regular employee. We're all, it falls in line. And I think we, it's almost like we scared to throw out a number. To me, like, we don't want to negotiate a number with the city manager. So, I'm just going to throw out a number. I'm just going to throw out a number. We can vote it up or vote it down. And I don't know how Mr. Jackson would feel about it, Mr. Jackson. I know I had stuck on the one twenty, but I don't think it's fair to have you, to say, well, you, we need you to complete all of these projects before I even could think about even giving you a, a, a raise or, or even making you the permanent city manager, from what it sounds like. I don't think, I don't, I don't, honestly, don't think that's fair. So, I'm going to throw out a number, and you can, and correct me if you're wrong, accept it or not, of one thirty-five as the city manager.
I will accept that, vice mayor.
Well, that would be my, that would be my motion, so I would make motion, Mayor, well, just to try and negotiate.
My question is, like, if, what are we basing our number on? What metrics or what factors are we taking into consideration when we negotiate a number?
Well, part of it is what we previously had advertised the position for, and I know it would say interim, but it was still city manager, basically. And you look at your population size of your community. You look at your staffing size of your staff. You look at the different departments you have. I, I'll take this for instance. We have five departments in our city, and only two of them have more than two employees. That's recreation and public works. So, we have a small, small city. The, the, the income that we receive is relative small. So, you do it based on what you can afford comfortably, knowing that you would have gradual increases after years progress.
Okay, so, here's my issue with that. First of all, I ask you, if we've done any research in terms of market analysis, what city managers with his experience are making right now, even in our area, have we done any, any research whatsoever when it comes down to that? Has anyone done it? Has anyone?
I have, I've-
Because I can tell you right now, we have a city right down the street with a five million dollar budget, five thousand people, who hired their city manager eleven years ago, making eighty thousand. Now, he's making one fifty-five, but less experienced than this man. So, if we're going to do the comps, if we're going to expect him to operate with a level of excellence, then that responsibility is also on us to do our part in terms of researching and, and the analysis of the comps. Having a budget of five million dollars and being able to pay your city manager one fifty-five.
How long it took them to get to one fifty-five?
It doesn't matter. He doesn't have the same level. Listen to what I'm saying. He doesn't have the same level of experience as this man, and he's one fifty-five. As a matter of fact, if you actually did the research, most of the city managers that are making one twenty right now have one year or less experience. I did the work, so.
With the population, though, let's, let's look at that. Of making one twenty.
Where are these cities at?
No, 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 no. Let me, let me.
I just asked where the city is located, that's all I'm asking.
As well as the city budget.
I'm going to give us that, okay? So, all of these are in the state of Florida, but if you want to kind of try to bring it closer, we have Bay Harbor Islands, Dade County, seven point three million dollar budget, three years of experience, two eighty-three five. Bel Air in Palos County, population of four thousand five hundred and seventy-nine, nine million dollar budget, one fifty-five, right on the money, with one year less experience. Bellevue, Marion County, five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight, twenty-four point four million dollars, one sixty-eight. Shall I continue?
No, you can continue.
Okay. So, budget size matters in terms of can you afford to do it? And I, I think the answer is yes, and I'm not saying the one forty. I'm saying, as far from a budget standpoint, from a budgetary standpoint, all it's saying is, can the city afford to do it? And right down the street, we have a city that has a five million dollar budget that pays their city manager one fifty-five. Just like you selling your house.
With the Avalon Tykes they bring in.
That's, that's fine, but what I'm saying is, just like you selling your house. You can, you can want a million dollars all you want. They're going to base it on the comps. The same thing happens in the professional world. I'm asking, what are we basing our number on? Because when I look at the factors, of course, size plays a role, budget is a role, geographical location, which is, I'll say. The complexity of the role, on a scale of one to five, how difficult do you think his job is? The complexity of the role, on a scale of one to five, how difficult do you think his job is?
Well, I'm basing my comps on what the job was advertised as, and I've asked the question, where we gonna get the money from? And I haven't gotten an answer for that yet.
Explained that.
No, he didn't. Mr. Bowden, he said he's gonna rearrange the budget. That's not giving me a direct answer.
He's explained.
He's gonna rearrange the budget.
Explain it again, sir.
What you told me.
You have the ability to make budget adjustments throughout the fiscal year. There are funds, we're in the, going into the second quarter of the fiscal year. There are some un, uncomprimented funds that's available for transfer, and that ability to do that resides as a recommendation to the city commission and approval by the city commission. I have the ability administratively to make adjustments in different categories of the budget. It's not only restricted to the city manager's budget that I would have the ability to do that. And I will repeat and remind you that the overall budget for city managers in the last three years have been higher than the budget is for this year for the city manager. So the same budget that was approved last year, I think it was sixty, seventy thousand dollars more than what was approved for this year. So it's not a question on whether or not, it's the ability to afford the position. The budget is there, it's in place, and it could adequately sustain what I've requested.
Mr. Jackson, would that previous budget include like an administrative assistant from the city manager?
Total budget. I'm talking total budget, yes.
I think you're planning on, or was planning on utilizing an administrative assistant. You're gonna need some type of clerical help.
What I'm saying to you, what I'm saying to you, mayor, is that everything inclusive, personnel, materials, supplies, it's sixty thousand more last year to include an administrative assistant. I have not included an administrative assistant, I have not hired one to date, but those dollars are inclusive of what I'm reflecting in the, in the total in comparison to previous year budgets.
May I just say something, Mayor, bear, bear, but as I always hear whenever we do a budget, oh, there's a projected budget. There were a lot of funds in that budget that was not used. Yes, that may have been the numbers, and it may have been high, but I don't think we end up spending all of those funds on what was projected in that budget, because a lot of positions was in that budget that was never hired for. So, yes, the budget probably was projected higher, but those funds were never used. As I always, you know, hear the other commissioners say, it's a projected budget, and the budget does change. So yes, it may have been higher, but I don't think all of those funds was spent on what that budget was projected for, because a lot of that staff was not even hired, and I get it, I understand the money was projected in the budget for them, and that money was not used, just like now. We have positions now that we're advertising and no one has been hired, so I'm sure that's money that can be transferred because nobody was in that position. But my concern still is, and, you know, it's not personal, it's what's best for the city. You know, the city manager just come before us and said that he wanted to have meetings once a month, okay? He said he want to be able to, when part-time jobs come available, he wants to be able to do that. So my concern is, we're asking for more money, and seems like we're trying to reduce the job, and yes, in the budget, there is, Mr. Jackson, you have in the budget for consulting for you, you said, so you can make sure some of the decisions that you're making is correct. So he does have, you know, in the budget for him when he needs assistance, so I'm sticking with the one twenty. I understand, that's what the job was advertised for, and that's just my stance and the reason that I'm sticking with the one twenty.
Commissioner Williams, in response to a lot of your remarks, and it's, it's become repetitive that you state things that are inaccurate, and for the record, I never said a lot of the things that you just mentioned a minute ago.
So you didn't ask for a second, to do consulting or teaching in your contract?
I did not. I did not ask for anything. A component of the budget allows me, if approved, to do that as a noticed concept. I did not, and I've repeated several times that I'm not looking to add a second job or a third job. It's just a professional courtesy, which is not inconsistent with city managers to teach or provide consulting opportunities. It's something that you, you're probably not familiar with, and maybe not even fully understand, but to reiterate something that's not true and not what I said is not, is not a good thing.
But we've never had a city manager in the city of Pohoka to teach or consult. It has not been allowed in the past, so I'm sure I understand.
Well, you never had, you also never had a city manager to work on five audits at one time.
We're negotiating right now, it's just, if we're negotiating, is that what we're doing, so?
Well, I gave my initial, I gave her one twenty.
So, what I'm saying is, if that's the case, if we're allowing him to do the consulting with the permission of the commission, why not use that to say, okay, well, instead of the one forty, we can negotiate down from there? I, we need to start making attempts to come to some common ground on, on compensation in a way that both the commission and Mr. Jackson are satisfied. Use that, use that information to negotiate down from one forty.
My, my position to be honest is, one twenty, that's equivalent of ten thousand dollars a month. Not quarterly, not bi-monthly, a month. And I think for a city our size, that's appropriate starting salary for a city manager to come on board.
That's appropriate for a city manager with less than three years of experience, based on the information. Now, now that we're talking about.
How many years of experience, I'm, I'm not gonna be.
No, no, no.
Trump, but how many years of experience the previous city manager had?
Less than one.
No, you've been a city manager before.
So Lucas has never a permanent city manager. He was never a permanent city manager.
South Bay was before.
Oh, you're talking about?
Him, Mr. Jackson.
I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking about his experience, I'm saying, how many years of experience has he had?
Eleven.
Of a city manager's experience?
Eleven.
What city manager, which, which city? I'm not sure. Where you get eleven years from?
From his mouth, he told me.
What city?
You, you were talking about South Bay, correct?
Yes.
Eleven years.
No, it wasn't city manager.
No, I, I had a total years of, of six years as, as the manager in South Bay.
Are you talking about the current city manager, or are you talking about Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Jackson.
Six years city manager, permanent city manager experience, and over twenty years consulting municipalities. Over twenty. And while we're talking about the numbers, let's go ahead and do this. Now, to keep everything in perspective, I will say, and I like to give credit to where credit is due. Mr. Lucas initiated, you know, many of the audits, but like every, like every city manager, you inherit the work of the city manager before you. So in the last seven months, from June to December, J-LAC, we received two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. We got the PBSO flock grant for sixty-four thousand dollars. Business residential co-violation, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Negotiated PBSO contract, a two percent dimmer decrease would save us another six thousand dollars. That's four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, four hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now, to keep everything in perspective, in seven months, we paid him ten thousand dollars, that's seventy thousand dollars. With the amount of money that we've gotten in the past seven months, that's a five hundred and ninety-six percent return on investment. We put out seventy, we got four hundred and sixteen thousand. Five hundred and ninety-six percent return on investment. That's perspective.
Perspective would be to secure that in a grant form, that we, I mean, where did that come from? Who started that process? I'm saying, somebody got to.
Which is why I like to say that, which is why I like to say, I give credit to where credit is due. I give credit to initiated, but you also got to give credit to who it falls under. Just as the progress of the city will fall under you, you're the mayor. They're gonna come and talk to you regardless of who did what, or even what one of us might do. They're gonna go to you, they're gonna want to talk to you about it. It happens under your watch. You're credited with some of that.
So basically, what we're saying, ten thousand dollars per month right now is pretty low. That's, that's, that's low regardless, that's, that's a low.
So let me ask, Mayor, when you advertised, we advertised for interim city manager. And you advertised that interim city manager at one twenty. That what, that what was stated? I'm, I'm just, am I correct? As an interim, we advertised the city manager one twenty. So they came on, so I'm, I'm just getting clearance, so they came on as interim city manager at one twenty. Am I right about that? Is that correct? So when they got in here as interim city manager, then is there not where you, you negotiate if they're gonna, they put in a contract for, you put out for now, for the city manager, will you not negotiate that one twenty, or whatever the, you know, that rate is? Cause you advertised one twenty as an interim for so long. Now we talking about our city manager. So you want, so the, so what you're saying is interim and the city manager should be the same, should be the same, one twenty?
That's coming from.
That's what you're saying.
The interim means, yeah, the permanent means, now you're gonna be the full-time permanent city manager.
Right, I know what you mean, but I'm saying, so you advertise the. In a one twenty, then the city manager come on, you still gonna be the one twenty, is what you're saying.
Some to be honest wanted even the interim to be a lot lower than the one twenty.
No, I'm just going about what we have on paper.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's, that's what was, conversation was. It should be lower. Then you bring in a person, and you maybe add a little to that. The last interim city manager was making one ninety, that was Ms. Adams.
One ninety?
One, I'm saying ninety thousand or ninety-two thousand, because it was in the low nineties as interim city manager. But when they had permanent city manager come in at one hundred thousand, because that was a market for our smaller community.
At, at, but at the end of the day, even if she did it at ninety, that's, that's, let's deal with the misconception. Like I said, it's based on a number of factors, education is one of them. So when we set education requirements, you're talking about a person with a bachelor's degree in political science and a master's in public administration. I could understand fully why Ms. Adams would be paid less than someone that already meets those requirements. That's understandable. There's no flat rate approach to this. It's based on a number of factors, and education and experience is one of them. He's been a permanent, he's been a permanent city manager. Let's talk about, we can even talk about Lucas, who had less than one year. He had at least been an interim before. So, an interim with the education, that meets the minimum requirements. There, that's the difference. You don't pay everybody the same amount regardless of whatever their background is. And I think that's one of the things that we're missing, and the fact that we're having this discussion again, a third time, and not even attempting to actually negotiate and meet somewhere in the middle, I don't think we're even paying attention to how, how much of an insult that is. You're talking about a person that has the experience, we, what, how, how much value do we place on someone being homegrown? How many years have we been talking about, we want someone homegrown? Well, he is homegrown. Homegrown and highly qualified, okay? We've been asking for this, so how much value are we gonna place on this?
I'm gonna just use a reference to another city manager who had worked here, was making one hundred and eighteen thousand. He resigned. He applied for a city manager job in Hawthorne. City had known about our size, they offered him ninety-five thousand dollars. That was their offer.
I understand that. That city manager, that city manager, that city manager came in with less experience.
He didn't accept that.
I understand that. That's, of course he didn't, that's insulting. But at the same time, that's, that's a person that had at least, what, six or seven years of experience? Now, all the other stuff may play, play into it, but that's, that's, I would have turned it down too. That's an insult. In this market, it is. We, this is coming, this is coming from a city.
For that city that size in that population.
That's fine. This is coming from a city that's turned its position over seven times in five years.
Let me speak on that too. We, we mentioned that now, but the fact is, we didn't fire any city managers.
Turnover is turnover.
Last ten years that I'm aware of.
Turnover is turnover.
Most of them was resignation, but we, we, we can't control that part of it. And that can be some outside influence, even on the dies, they, they gave a city manager enough pressure that they resigned and left. And I'm not saying that didn't occur sometimes, but it wasn't real our fault for the turnover that occurring. I don't think it's mostly our fault, the turnover that occurring to city managers.
So we can choose whatever we want to choose.
Yeah.
Uh, like I said, you can't choose the consequences, so we have, we have one thirty-five. Do we all, as a commission, disagree at one thirty-five?
I have a statement I, I want to make. I think, to my, to my memory, the position was, I actually advertised as a city manager, and I think we had called the applicants and let them know that it wasn't advertised correctly, and that there would be interference for the interim city manager. But the position was advertised.
Let's, let's, let's go back to Commissioner Bowden. He made the fact that someone put on the table one thirty-five. All we need to do is get a second, and then we'll vote it up or down. And then somebody may come up with another offer, or it may stay the same as it's originally was.
About that one twenty, my.
So at least we have that on the table. You, you second in that, so it can be voted on?
Mr. Jackson, are you happy with one thirty-five with that?
I think he originally said it would be.
Yes, that's, that's acceptable.
Mr. Jackson, would you accept anything less than that, one thirty? That's right in the middle. Cause we're dancing around this. We have a low number, we have a high number, and we can walk out of this satisfied if we can agree on something that's reasonable. I understand that the commission needs to feel a little bit at ease, that they might think that, you know, that's, that's a bit too much. I, I totally understand that. At the same time, the word compensation actually means balance. So what type of balance can we create so where, if you're gonna be our city manager, we're satisfied with that for the time being, and we're satisfied with paying that, paying you that, given the services that you provide to our city? So I know one thirty-five is spread out there, and one thirty is right in the middle. I just want us to actually be able to negotiate instead of dance around with no basis for what we're saying, so.
So I'll accept the one thirty-five.
Nothing less? Okay, so now we, this is, this is a part of it, so. She made the motion for the one thirty-five, I'll second. They'll vote it down, and whatever happens, happens. You don't get to choose the consequences.
We have a motion to, for one thirty-five by Vice Mayor Mervin, property second by Commissioner Bowden. Call for questions. Hearing the honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
No.
Commissioner McPherson?
No.
You're back.
No. Motion fail. Do you have an offer that remains at one twenty, Mr. Jackson?
He said he won't accept anything under one thirty-five, am I perhaps, so? He said he wouldn't accept anything under one thirty-five, so I move that we put the position out, I guess. If he said he's not accepting anything under one.
Again, Commissioner, did I say that?
Oh, I thought he asked you if you would take anything under one thirty-five.
I would accept one thirty. That's below one thirty-five.
Oh, I thought you said you wouldn't accept anything under one thirty-five. I'm sorry.
Move to have the contract at one thirty.
There's a second.
There's a second?
Second. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Huh?
Who made the motion on?
I made.
Commissioner Bowden.
And who seconded?
Vice Mayor Mervin.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bowden and property second by Vice Mayor Mervin to offer one thirty-five, one thirty. Call for questions. Hearing and honor, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvin Williams?
No.
Commissioner McPherson?
No.
You're back.
No.
Well, I'm over that, so I guess that's it.
I wanna add, can we, um, look into making sure, uh, I don't know if I do in a resolution form, we'll have to do some research. To get Mr. Jackson so he can at least get the, uh, benefits. The benefits.
You can't bring it on this meeting?
I'm saying, okay, future agenda.
You have to stick with special meeting to the items that are listed.
And, and in response, uh, I've heard, I've heard you loud and clear, um, the majority. And, uh, I will, uh, if you, if you would provide me an opportunity, I will make a decision at the June fourteenth meeting on whether or not uh, I can accept and continue with existing contract.
January fourteenth?
Jan- January fourteenth, yes.
So, at this point, we can either table this resolution or vote it down since you need time to.
There is nothing to do with this, this, this is complete, this resolution is complete.
Okay.
Right, so, um, the, the issue is, or not even issue, you've already voted him, I guess, as interim city manager. So it's gonna travel under the provision that I read out loud, right? So, he'll let you know at the January fourteenth meeting and then you all will be able to make your decision.
We got three other items in this only for discussion, so I don't know, we can try to move through that one or if, if Commissioner have any input on it, these. Next item is a discussion and a direction for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five legislative priorities. And Mr. Jackson had put in our package a priority list and and wanted to get some input on whether or not we wanted to attempt to have all of these submitted or narrow it down to maybe three or four. There's seven on this list, they're all needed, but that may scare some legislators away when you do axe for more than they are probably willing to give. And I'm gonna be honest, in the last two years, we haven't received anything yet, so. And we have received it five legislative priority at one time before. But that was during the time we had a senate president in our district, and it helped a whole lot. And there was some, uh, love, controversy about the, uh, freeing a farm land, uh, taking a farm land. So they did what they could to show this area they were so, uh, uh, supported of us.
Mayor, if I, if I may, the general field in Tallahassee for this upcoming session is, uh, suggest municipalities present no more than two legislative parties, because the overall reality is that the, um, the budget is gonna be cut considerably, is what's being forecast. And out of those, uh, two projects, uh, there's a flavor in Tallahassee where a lot of most of those projects are gonna be water or water-related projects. So with your, uh, determination and negotiations, it may or may not fit one of the priorities that I provided to you a couple of months ago, but I would highly recommend not to promote or project no more than two projects. And that's the general field and, uh, for the legislative session, upcoming session.
I have a, a question on one of the items, if it's appropriate at this time to ask. The Marina improvement, I see the two hundred, one thousand, I thought we, didn't we previously get funding for?
And that's two million?
Two million, I mean, two million, I'm sorry. Didn't we previously get funding for those particular docks and the, um?
Yeah, it, it was three docks we got, well, we really got.
And the, um, gas pump.
As, as the mayor started to indicate, uh, you receive not legislative appropriation, but you received dollars, or it's earmarked from ARPA, to do major improvements and, uh, actually new docks for D, E, and F. As you probably well know, that there, uh, remains a, uh, additional docks A, B, and C that needs exactly the same thing, uh, done that was completed for D and F. So, this improvement of two million dollars is, is somewhat, uh, in line with what today's dollars would do to, uh, improve those docks. And also the additional information that's listed in, in there, the addition of boat dock entry and exit fencing and the replacement of three campground gates. Also add four new electric vehicle charging stations, bathing tackle and gift shop. And the installation of new water and sewer lines with backup preventer meters at the north end pavilion. Now, based on what I just said and based on what's the flavor in Tallahassee, if, if you could probably from a recommendation, adjust this request to include installation of new water and sewer lines.
For the campground.
For the campground, it probably have a, a lot more, um, chances on being funded. Uh, it's just a recommendation based on, again, what's proposed and what's anticipated for this upcoming session.
And with the fact that the state basically own the property, hopefully they would find something they have ownership of. Possibly. And I would say that second one, I know it's not a water project, but it's probably the one that most is needed for us as a city, is our infrastructure improvement. Our roads are crumbling, at one point, we had about six percent of our roads done, but that's been five, six years. And even some of those are kinda crumbling, so that's a big axe, fifteen million dollars, but even if we got a portion of it, it would go a long way into proving, improving our infrastructure. So those are two projects I would consider maybe using as our project, uh, legislative priorities. The infrastructure project and the, uh, Marina improvement project. That's just a suggestion, but.
When you say the infrastructure improvements, are you referring to the storm drain system? Or are you talking about the road?
The roads.
The roads are hard ask, and they've been discussing this, um, about how difficult of an ask that is. Now, if we went with storm drains, then I think we'd have a, a better shot at it. But roads, money for roads, um, even our meeting with county commissioner, uh, that's, that's a very tough ask right now.
Uh, which one are you referring to?
The actual money for roads.
No, I'm saying which, which, where the storm drains is.
It's, it's still under infrastructure improvement.
Okay, got you, okay.
But, uh, in, in, um, train, um, storm drainage systems in flood prone, prone areas, um, I would deal with that more so than, than trying to get money to repair roads, cause they've already talked about that being a very difficult ask at this point.
I, I will, I know we're talking legislative priorities now, but when you consider the list, there is also opportunities outside of the legislature that, uh, in terms of, uh, just got a notice, I think it was today or yesterday, that talked about, uh, the new round for SCOP funding. And as you, uh, probably well know, that, that was the funding that was provided for Barfield Highway Project. That's a substantial amount of money, and, uh, that can be a new ask under that next round of funding. Uh, so already talked with staff about outlining, uh, a strategy to apply for those dollars. And, and from my understanding, there's no limitation on how many projects you can apply for. So again, that was, that was my thinking, and it will be my recommendation, again, you have a, a, an exhaustive list here. Um, I, I would recommend kind of misogynant to kind of line it up with water and water-related projects that includes infrastructures, water, water-related. And from that, what's left in addition to apply for additional, uh, funding opportunities, that's, that's already been identified.
So we're saying one of the main ones is gonna be drain, um, system, which is upon the infrastructure improvement for number two, but instead of saying roads, we're gonna replace, take, scratch that out and just put drainage system in flood, flood prone areas. Is that what we're saying, the first one gonna be?
I think also we wanted to try to have a meeting with Senator Herr and kind of get her input or advice. I know we went up there and we heard some things, and we say that they may not fund, and they may, it's a question mark, it's a long shot, but.
Is it possible, I think you can pregive her the list of what we're?
Yeah, and I think even to add you, we're gonna try to, I think, uh, Mr. Jackson was gonna try to set up a meeting with her. So we can actually one-on-one have a, a talk with her, for her support.
Another reason why they said two, cause her dictionary is very large and she has to, uh, go in and fight for each one of the dishes.
Right, yeah, but she can definitely get the list, so she'll know what will be coming up, considering uh, as a possibility to the axe for our legislative priorities. But to be honest, everything on this list is really needed, I know it's gonna be a long shot, but I'm almost inclined to ask for a little more than what we expect maybe two will get. If they say two, I look at axe for four, you know, and maybe you'll get two of the four. But just to go for two and only two, I know that's the recommendation. But I would think a little outside the box and go for four, I really would.
So which four are we going for? Which four are we going for?
We haven't really made the decision, I'm just putting my two standing in. If I had four, it would be the Marina improvement, it would be the, uh, infrastructure improvement. It would be City Hall slash resume, res- resume.
So we're gonna disregard and the hurricane card.
I'm not saying we disregard, I'm just saying I'm giving my thought and input on how I would go. I would act for a little more than what I would suggest they would make it. I'm not saying it's gonna be right or wrong, but if I was a gambling person, when I say a betting person, that's what I would bet on. Go for a little more of what you're gonna give, I think if we went for two, we may end up just getting one, we go for four, and they say, hey, well, gonna put four out of there, maybe we can give them two of these projects. That's just my thought, but I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but that's what I would try to shoot for.
Mayor, I will put forward the recommendation of the, the city commission. I was just providing information based on conversations I've had already.
Yeah.
Well, mine would be in order, um, the campground, because one of the things that he talked about was that, um, water and sewer. If we can include that in that, and that wasn't talking about the campground, we was talking about including the water and sewer repairs, correct? And all the sewer repairs.
That was actually in the Marina improvements, which is also can be considered a campground, but that's the first one that's listed. There's also a water feature in the campground repairs and acquisition of cabins, that last section that deals with, um, include water connections along with backflow preventive measures, meters for the hundred campsites.
And again, too, the campground is something that's state-owned, and that's another way of generating some revenue for the cities, so. Those two you can.
That's my line of thought, something that could, if we get it, um, running right, that could have some sustainability in its, in itself. And number two would be the infrastructure and improvement of Martin Luther King. And number three, the Marina. I would just. Say what? Uh, the campground to include the water lines, but if that's, if that can be done within the, um, Marina improvement, I can deal with that. But the other things in the campground, when I'm thinking about the campground, as the mayor said, that's something that's owned by the state. And as well, if we get all of our conduits working for the campground, it could generate revenue. And we can maybe get out of the deficit in our next audit. Say what, number two?
You saying that's number two?
No, that's number one. And, um.
So you're including them first two as one?
If we can. Combine them, cause that, uh, on the audit, I think he, he doesn't say Marina Campground, he just mentioned just the Marina. And we can probably make those one project, project, the Marina Campground.
Yes, that, that can be combined and made one, and then the second one, we have to consider as this, if we were just doing it two, what would be, what would be our preference for the second one?
For me, I'm for sure.
Work on trying to combine as much as he can and focusing in on much of the water part of it at the state is kind of tending toward.
My number, my number two is still Martin Luther King, I know that's a long shot, um.
Yeah, park's okay, but they, they, they do parks, they kinda, kinda putting a breakdown on park, and then we got two hundred and fifty thousand, which we're working on, but we haven't even completed that.
Well, that's my only concern.
Five years, I'm surprised they would even look at that, to be honest. I'm not saying that I need it, definitely need it, but if I'd have gave you five, I'm gonna say, five years ago, some money you haven't spent. I'm not even looking too closely for you.
Yeah, I can, I can scratch that one, matter of fact, that's my round of thought, two asks was, we haven't did anything with the money that they've already given us. I guess my number two would be the, um, infrastructure. If we're gonna combine one and two.
Is it possible, uh, you guys to present your priorities, uh, to me, and then I could kind of look at all of them, see what can be combined, what could be suggested, and rank them. One through, how many I ended up with, five or six, and then give you an opportunity to review the top three, four, how many you wanna present? And make that, uh, the, the priorities for this upcoming session.
I'm not opposed to that.
Well, let me, let me just say, Mr. Mayor, what you probably wanna do is just put it on the record. And then everybody puts him on the record, and he can take the, you can give him the authority with, through consensus to go back and you know, because you can't vote on anything, but you could put it on the record tonight, and then he can go back through consensus and your consensus that you're allowing him to do that.
Right.
Right.
Excuse me, one of the, um, I just got an email from a citizen, they're saying they can't hear the commission speak clearly in the mic, so you can pull your mic down.
Okay, I gave you mine, and I think the mayor already gave you yours, we picking four?
I'm, I just kind of put that out, you don't really have to go with that, I'm just a thought.
Mine would be the campground and Marina, um, the infrastructure. And the infrastructure improvement on Martin Luther King. I'll stick with those three, if we're gonna combine the, um, campground, if you have to separate them, that, that Marina be three, camp, campground will be one. Martin Luther King be two, Marina be three, but if we can combine them. And the infrastructure, I'm sorry.
You're saying, uh, Senator Turner, we should give him.
You should, yes, sir, you should give him your recommendations now on the record.
Individual, just.
Yes, just say your top three or four, whatever you all are, decide to do, and then he can take those and, and you're giving him, you know, through consensus. The authority to, um, rank, uh, or prioritize based on what you're saying now. So other word, in other words, it's transparent, it's not, you know, each of you sending something, uh, survey or anything like that.
It'd be on record.
Okay. Mine would be the first, first three, the Marina Improvement, the campground repair and acquisition of cabinets. And the infrastructure improvement. I know you're gonna work on trying to focus more on water, but those are my thoughts to you. However, you want to try to incorporate them in here, but it'd be the first three that lists on here.
Okay.
Mine would be affordable housing and storm drain systems and, and flood prone areas.
Commissioner Kyle Williams.
Mine, um, the first one would be the, um, infrastructure improvements. And, um, listening to them talk, when they was talking a lot about the, um, drainage and the, um, hurricane, you know. With affordable housing, they want to start doing more with their houses because of the hurricanes and the damaging. I was thinking maybe if we tie in the Italy Rose Gym with it and say, like, we can use it, like he has here, um, as an emergency management, um, shelter. We may be able to get some help with getting that completed and making it hurricane-proof and using it as a shelter. So we may be able to get that taken care of, so that would be my second one going that route.
Thanks, Mayor.
So we just need two, right?
Two, yeah.
And the other two would be the first and the second one, but those would be my top two, infrastructure and the, um, gym.
Mine is the Marina Improvement, the campground and the Italy Rose, because I, um, speaking with one person from the legislation. I know they're looking into, as Ms. Cowan said, or Williams said, for, because of the last hurricane, they're looking for displacement of residents. So that would be one of, uh, that would be one of my, also the water, uh, Marina and campground. And all, well, before is infrastructure improvement.
You remind, repeating your order?
Marina, campground, almost like a Marina, campground, infrastructure and the Italy Rose.
Okay.
And as the city attorneys say, that's a consensus to have, Mr. Jackson, kind of tabulate those and try to come up with. Two or three items we can present.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion and direction of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five lobbyist options. Mr. Jackson, you want me to lead this?
Yes, I know there was, there was some conversations, uh, as of last commission meeting. Uh, centered around whether or not the city would hire a lobbyist. And just wanted to bring this back to you to see if you guys want to make a decision one way or the other. And if so, develop a process that will allow, uh, for a selection process for that.
Biggest question is, I know we're late in the game at this point, but with time, allow us to go out, solicit. An RFP for a lobbyist and have that person in place and time enough to.
Yep.
For the legislative section, so I'd put it that way.
Before it starts, it'll, it'll be tight, it'll be very tight. Because you actually have to, uh, advertise and I'm sure you want to interview and from that make a selection. And at the end of that process, you're probably already into the legislative, uh, calendar.
Are we able to do a contract or do we have to set it out for an RFP? Are we able to contract for a short period of time?
You have a procurement code and your procurement code does provide for a contract. Although you had a, um, a previous resolution on this very same issue.
Mm-hmm.
That where a contract was, where an RFP was supposed to go out, um, like, probably a couple of years ago now. Um, and I don't think that ever happened, so, um, it would, at this point, um. The mayor is probably right, you may not have enough sufficient time to, um, get everything off the ground and do a procurement process and go forward. Um, one of the other things you could do, because it is a professional service, you could decide that you want to do it as an emergency item. Um, and bring that back in January. It's not on this, you know, agenda to vote on, but you could bring that back if you believe that you could. You know, you had some things that you wanted to have lobbied and have somebody who is ready to go, you could, um, make a selection on that.
The, the only question mark with that is the last, uh, audit that we went through. With the state, they kind of mentioned the fact that we failed to acquire. That process, especially the, the bidding process of get at least three quotes. For whoever you had do the work, I think some work was done on the Marina that didn't fall under that process, but then we used.
I, I would beg to differ on that, because that was done as an emergency and ARPA does allow for it to be done. And so I, I, your legal counsel disagrees with whoever said that wasn't a, a proper procedure, because you did go through an emergency process.
They mentioned emergency part of it, too.
Which is, which is allowable under ARPA. And, um, and so, and I actually went back and forth with, um, some, somebody when Rodney was here, uh, on that same issue. And pointed out how our code allows for that and pointed out the provision in the ARPA regulations that allow for that. And I believe we did it completely appropriately. So now this is you, I mean, best practices, obviously, are you want to have a procurement process other than for those things that say that you, um, that are exempt. This is not anything particularly exempt, however, under Florida, uh, statutes and, um, does recognize, you know. Professional services being different than, let's say, engineers and architects or something like that. So, um, if you thought it was something, um, that you wanted to do legally, we could, you know, you do also have an exception in your own. Uh, procurement code that allows for emergency purchases, if we believe that's something that you wanted to do. Um, it may not be best practices, because you still gotta kind of figure out, you know, some process for it, like you were saying, Mayor. You may want to have, you know, the manager bring back people or somehow people know to come to the meeting and do presentations. I mean, it's not the best practice, but I'm just giving you all legal options that may be available.
And I think too, outside of that, if we're looking at other options, would be to meet with our state representative, at least Herrer. And whoever we're gonna have doing the, uh, presentation of the request, who's gonna sponsor it. If we as a commission meet with them, in addition to that, make sure that majority of us. Have a day or two up in Tallahassee where we can meet to try to get support for our priorities. Outside of that, that may, that may work also possibly.
I've had communications with, uh, directly with Senator Herrer's office and also the representative. And I think I sent an email indicating that if you could provide days of your availability, we would schedule meetings. I think I sent it last week or week before after the commission meeting. And as soon as I get those dates from, you know, I'll, I'll start shopping, I think.
Are you gonna try to have as many of us attend at one time or you trying to do it individually?
No, I wouldn't do it at one time, but that's, that's prohibited on the sunshine law. Um, but what I will do, based on your scheduling availability, I'll try to schedule something with each individual person. It may not be in person, it could be through team, teams of Zoom, at least we'll have an audience and be able to share, uh, these requests.
And by the time they have the three tops, so that's what we can all concentrate on.
Yes, sir.
So for input and direction, as far as the lobbyists itself, are, are we gonna jump that or just rule that out? And try to do the Zoom meeting with our legislators and then attend the Tallahassee, uh, meeting?
I'll follow the direction of the commission, Mr. Mayor.
Commission, what, what's, what's your thought on that? Are we gonna try or should have the city manager jump to hire lobbyists at this time? Or try to go with another option?
I think if we can do it through contractual service for a short period of time, why not?
We got.
And in the past, Mary, you actually need them up there, you, you actually need a lobbyist up there, because you're not there. And you have to remember, you have your state rep, but she's not only talking for Pahokee. She's talking for the whole district, which goes from Stewart back up this way, so you might get missed out.
Can I weigh in on, on the non-legal thing? So having worked for the legislature, I could tell you all that it means a lot when you go in person. And I kind of disagree a little bit, I don't necessarily, I think it's, actually, if you have a representative who's really working for you, and I don't know who your rep is. But you, you, as City of Pahokee, you can't look at it, Vice Mayor, as you're, you know, they got a lot of other cities. No, you have to make these people, whether it's your, your state rep, your, your senator, your congressperson, you have to make them. You have to be in their faces, you have to demand that they represent you. It's not a, you know, maybe they got other place, and so it, it just kind of struck a nerve.
No, this is what I'm saying, on Palm Beach County Day, you up there, you in their face, you giving them your priorities, you talking to them. But you're, you're their five minutes.
You're right, but I.
With about fifty others waiting, I'm not saying that she's not gonna talk about.
I, and I understand what you're saying, but these lobbyists that you look to hire, a lot of them have, you know, they got other clients. You're not there on, on the client, so if you were concerned about, and I'm not saying you shouldn't, you know, this is a commission decision, obviously, and I'm probably talking a little bit too much. But I just want to, I, I guess, just put it out there, what really, um, I think moves the needle a lot is when your representative, your state rep or your state senator. Set appointments, because you can have them set appointments for you when you're down, when you're up in Tallahassee. They can set appointments for their colleagues through their, you know, it doesn't always have to be talking to them, it could be their staff, you know, how great is your relationship with the staff? And so I'm telling you this as someone who, you know, I've worked for the Florida Legislature, I, you know, this is stuff I see, I know, I watched. And it really does mean something when, you know, your people who represent your city are saying, hey, these are my people and, and, you know, help them out. Let, make sure we get that, whatever, here's the Senate Committee Chair, here's the person.
And I'm not saying a lobbyist thing important, but I heard the same thought pattern. You want to be able to talk directly to your legislators.
And we do.
I'm just saying that people just say that more effective than hiring a lobbyist. I'm just saying because the shortness of getting one on board, but that don't mean we can't try though. But I'm just saying, I think the other option is effective too, and most legislators would probably tell you that. At least that's what I have heard from majority of them, that I've kind of spoken to. Even when David Aaronberg was in the legislative, they say the same identical thing. Say the city is small, it's difficult affording one. And you'll be best served if you do your own lobbying and talk into them.
How often do we go up there, man? We go up there once.
Yeah, I, I, I told you.
I'm just saying, if we go up there one time, man, even from when you talk until even when Senator Power and all them, well, the first thing they say, they will help, okay, what is your priority? And by up there, the ones who have been there, they give me that they will help push your stuff alone, you know, not saying that you're not there, you're in their face. Like, right now, you can meet with Gil Herrer and I at her office and have our whatever talk, and then you, and we should. Because that's who she, we represent her, we voted for her to represent the City of Pahokee. But when you're up there, one, you do need, I agree, you need someone to help push your, your priorities alone. And that, that helped us in the past. So, you know, we don't, we only work there one time.
We're gonna, we'll try, we'll do both and we'll try it first and make sure we can at least maybe secure the service of lobbyists. Even if it's on a temporary basis or a short contract term, we want to try to do that. But definitely we'll do the other one as far as our input ourselves.
So, just so that I understand what the, um, the will of the commission is, so that we know what to bring forward in January. So should it just be a resolution that has a blank hiring blank? And then I guess somehow the word will get out that you're looking for a lobbyist, whether it be someone you had before or people that you all may know. And maybe they come to the meeting or maybe you put it on and it's, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, but you, it, 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 are you, are you? Yeah, what are, are you, do you have?
I've, I've spoken, I've spoken to at least, what, five lobbyists since being here. And so I have, I have a list that I can invite and, and make presentations to the commission. If that's, that's the desire of the commission, and then from there you can select.
Okay.
And so we'll be going with the premise that this is gonna be done on an emergency basis, Senator Turner.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it'll be an emergency item with a blank spot and you all can maybe make a decision that night.
Okay.
And then you also probably, um, want to look at not only sending them some of the priorities, but, um. And, and Mr. Jackson, I'm sure has done this also, but also looking at, um, what would be a scope of work, what you're expecting.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, let's move to our last, uh, topic of discussion, uh, discussion and direction for a workshop to discuss the selected. Process for the charter officers. I think that's, um, that, uh, we'll have Mr. Jackson kind of talk about, but, uh. Commissioner Mike Fisk and kind of wanted that to be done and look at.
I think we already passed a resolution, um, as far as the, um, city manager and the, um, clerk. As far as the interview process, I think Commissioner Bolden wanted to go into detail about that. But there is a resolution that we passed about a month or so ago.
That was just interview all over.
That, that they will be interviewed and that we will see applications prior to making a decision as far as hiring them. If I'm not correct, I mean, uh, I remember that resolution being.
Is that something, yeah, the clerk is shaking her head, yes, I, I don't think it was last month, but.
A couple of months ago.
Okay.
So my question is, um. In the event that we are in a position to where we need to hire a clerk or charter, any charter member. Um, do we fully understand what that process is? Will we hire someone to do that for us or is that a process we will undertake as a commission? If we're gonna hire someone, then there's no need for workshop outside of just it being informative. If we are going to be the ones that actually go through that process, then we may need to have a workshop on the process itself from beginning to end. From recruitment to screening to selection.
From my understanding of the request, I think it was last commission meeting, it was to develop a selection process. Us, over and above just an application, so that's the reason I presented it, uh, asked the clerk to present this as a discussion item. But again, I followed the direction of, of the commission. And I was looking, I, I was under the impression that you're gonna be setting a date for such a workshop.
But can I ask you, um, like what is the issue that you're trying to address? Is it, it, because it may, it may vary on a case by case basis depending on how it comes about, what, you know, it may vary. Like for instance, you have a process that's set out in your, um, in your ordinances and your charter, different provisions, I already addressed that. There was a resolution passed, um, the city clerk is saying, and I think I vaguely remember that, that was like sometime earlier this year. Why don't you allow us to pull together those things first so that you just see what you have already? So that you're not creating something that is inconsistent with something you already have. Right? Because I'm, I guess I'm not really clear on what the, what issue you're trying to address and so.
I'm saying if we have, if we're ever in a position in the future that we have to hire a charter member, the commission does that, correct?
Yes, the commission, no, the commission does that, but you already have things that are in place telling you how to do that. And so what I'm saying is if you'll allow us to pull those for you so that you see what you already have, including the resolution that was passed, then you can see what holes may exist or whatever, if, if any, and then it will help you to craft, you know, your process.
Okay.
Just a thought.
So all the tools that we use, you, that's what you're gonna pull together, all the tools that you use for that? Like say for instance, we used to scale before and there were some questions on there that was repetitive, so.
Oh, I see. That's what you're talking about, the tools.
Yeah, like bringing that and looking at the tools that we're using, what, you know, when we get to, once we look at the applications, what do we do next? So that's.
Right, I see, okay.
And that's what I'm saying, that the reason the questions were repetitive is because people came up with their own questions that were not based on the actual criteria. Did we set the actual criteria and base the questions on those criteria?
Now, those things were relevant to a city manager, but what you were looking for, I guess, is, um, well, maybe what you can do is pull all of the things that you have and then see what you're looking, because it may not be the same thing.
Right. So, so in essence, what I'm saying is the general process is similar. The criteria and the predictors are different. So there's a different set of criteria for the city manager than there is for the clerk, than there is for the attorney. So at that point is where the process will be different because the criteria are different. So when we say charter members, we, we, I mean, it was mainly city manager and clerk. We never said city attorney, which could very well be included.
But that, that's in your charter. So, yeah, I mean, that's in the charter. It tells you what qualifications are, it tells you have to have a contract and it tells you that's in your charter.
But as a group, are we familiar with the process or are we just gonna follow along from beginning to end?
We can pull it for you, what is existing now, but, but what I understood you to say last is it's, it's, you're talking about the, the tool that you would use to make the selection and the only selection that, and the selections would be the the, the, the selection of the city manager and the city clerk? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what was discussed, right? The selection process for city manager and clerk. Didn't we discuss that?
Um, so, so do you have those things in front of you? Because it's, it's an item. I mean, is there something, is this more than, were they looking at, to look at something?
Yes, from, from my understanding, uh, again, it's based on, uh, developing tools. The resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-four thirty-two by title. It, it's, it suggests that it requires public interviews and presentation of credentials for the position of city manager, city attorney and city clerk providing for a doctor presentation, representation. So it doesn't get in, inside and just say for instance, uh, the ICMA and FCCMA, they have, uh, tools that they recommend commission, the mayor and the commission use in selecting a city turn, I mean, city manager. And it plays, and I guess what I'm hearing is that they want to understand which tools apply for which charter position and what's more effective in hiring a person in that position. Outside of just doing a basic interview, uh, and presentation before the commission.
Right, and I can tell you that varies. It, it, it may vary upon what, um, if you had an outside search firm do it, it may vary upon which search firm you have do it, how they, how that, it may vary on a ranking system. If it's ranked or if it's, you know, the consensus vote, I mean, it's all over the place. So there's no specific, you know, this is what you can't do or this is what you can do. If you all wanted to set something like that, obviously you could, but it's, it, it's all over the place. And, um, and there's nothing that you're gonna be able to find and say, this is the best thing to, to do, you know, so, um, I, since you know what you're, what was being asked for, then maybe you, you know, you bring it back. But I thought what you were saying is just a selection in general, but it sounds like we had already gone through something to talk about an interview process and making sure there's some minimum qualifications for what you're seeking.
So do we need it or do we not need it? Do you want to put this up together and maybe in the next regular meeting?
I, I'm not really sure what it is. I don't want to bring it back wrong, but I'll work with the city manager to bring something back to you for you to look at.
So table that?
There's not, it's not.
There's nothing to do. Okay, gotcha.
Right. Next we'll have the discussion comments concerning of the city commission.
Well, really, this, this is, yeah, this really shouldn't be on here. It's just the items that are on the agenda.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the adjournment of this special meeting.
I'll make a motion that be adjourned this meeting.
Are there a second? Y'all want to stay?
Second.
It's moved by Commissioner Mike Fearsen and properly second by Commissioner Kylus Williams for the adjournment of the meeting. Call for questions. Eric Nunn, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner McPherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kyle Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Ben?
Yes. Meeting adjourned at nine PM.